Good afternoon, everyone. It is four oh five. Now I'm the default starter. Not that we're not waiting for the mayor. We're not waiting for the mayor. And we're moving forward because we appreciate all the work that all the staff has done. And so we appreciate that. And he will come, you know, when he get a chance, he'll drop in. Except for no problem. Shannon just take it away.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. And we wanted to highlight some of the great work by our Public Works team. And this is going to be a series of things that we do in Public Works. We had a lot of great feedback from the public about the Trails and Greenways presentation from a few weeks ago. And I think for everyone who listens online, that they, we have an opportunity to hear about some of the programs that we're doing here at the city. And tonight, we wanted to focus on solid waste and in particular, recycling. We've got a big festival coming up this weekend, Fall for Greenville, and we'll be doing a lot of recycling through, through our festival. But we have really done a lot with recycling in Greenville. In my opinion, we do some things that are different than other places with our recycling, including that we still have door-to-door recycling collection. And one of, one of only a few, I think, in the upstate that still do that. So we wanted to talk tonight about what we do with our, our recycling. Give you a reminder to everyone about what can be recycled and what cannot. Tell you about some of the fun things.
I thought they were just trying to address the, the people fixing the back bricks in my backyard. But then I didn't recognize the pizza box. That took me off. Thank you. I really thought, whatever. But she likes show and tell, so no problem.
That's right. And we want to talk about what, what causes something to go to landfill instead of be, being recycled, so we can keep things out of landfill and in our recycling. And then at the very end, we'll talk, we'll, we'll hit on litter and maybe yard waste if we have time. We'll just see. But it'll be, it'll be a quick, just a reminder of, of what we do. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brandon and our Public Works team to get it introduced. And so I will let them take it from there.
So we're talking trash today.
We are talking trash.
We're good at it. So, you know, the city's Public Works Department is top tier in the services they provide. And so they literally are leading the way in providing services to the residents. So we have the director, Dave Derrick. We have a solid waste director, Mildred, who was a short timer. She announced her retirement. Brings a plethora, a lot of experience that she has. And Lynn Watkins, recycling sustainability manager. So they're going to present to you the great work that they're doing. So turn it over to Dave and his folks.
Thank you, Brandon. Well, I think you took away everything I was going to say.
All the good stuff, yeah.
Superstar Mildred Lee, of course, as you now know, is leaving at the end of the calendar year. But she's been with us over 25 years. Started from the bottom, rose to the top ranks, and has been running the show for the last 10 years.
She was just a baby when she got.
Amazing job, so. While she was here, we did have a little baby raccoon. And it is Rocky. Rocky. Here comes Rocky.
Rocky drives better than Lottie.
Oh, my God. That's so awesome. Easy now, Rocky. All right, let's get this party started. So of course Lynn is here. You just heard that too. She's our sustainability environmental coordinator and recycling manager. Phenomenal job. Great, great update that you're going to see today. The test on all this stuff is only 20 questions at the end. So it won't be too hard for you council members. It'll be pretty good. So with that, Mildred, your last hurrah.
My last hurrah. So once again, I can't say how thankful I've been over the last 25 years to be a part of this wonderful organization. And I thank each and every one of you in this room who've helped me progress. And I'm very passionate and very proud of all the wonderful things that we've done in the solid waste and recycling division of Public Works. And Lynn is actually going to do the presentation. I just wanted, wanted to breeze through the very first, very first slide because it's definitely, you know, something that I'm very proud of. You know, it took a lot of work, you know, a lot of buy-in in order for us to be an award-winning solid waste division that we are today. And I just wanted to just breeze through this very quickly. You know, 2024, that's our current operating budget. We're a division of 39 full-time employees. Back in 2016, that number was actually 62. And we were able to make those reductions through attrition, vacancies, and use of our automated vehicles that only require one person to operate. So that is definitely something that was always a goal that I had in Public Works. And working with Dave, we were able to accomplish that to where we are today at 39 employees. Most of you already know that we provide weekly curbside collection services to over 17,000 residents. And the last bullet, second to the last bullet, we manage over 30,000 tons of material on an annual basis. One little known fact that you may or may not be aware of, that we actually pick up more yard waste during some years than we do garbage. And the last bullet is just a breakdown of the curbside, curbside collection commodities that, that we pick up every week. And I'm going to turn it over to Lynn. She's actually going to do the remaining portion of the presentation that focuses mainly on recycling and all the wonderful programs that we have going on.
Okay, thank you.
Before we start, I want to personally thank you for the 25 years that you put in. Every time I'm over at Public Works, the culture and attitude is unbelievable. And you've nurtured an incredible group of folks. So thank you. Thank you for that.
And she's fully staffed.
Thank you very much.
Yep. All right. Our curbside collection rate is estimated at 76%. That's a participation rate. We've collected over 3,000 tons annually diverted from the landfill of recyclables. And that includes our, our recycling centers located at Stone Avenue in North Greenville or Rutherford Road. And those two centers combined collect 300 tons, 300,000, sorry, 300 tons annually. And the contamination that, that does occur, it's, it's located in that picture in the middle there. It's mitigated through information, education, and enforcement. And that picture is an actual picture of, of some construction debris that came to us. And we do have LPR cameras. And for those of you that don't know what those are, those are license plate recognition cameras just installed this year. And that's been working to where we, we are, are helping to educate people on what needs to go in those containers and what doesn't need to go into those containers. So we're, we're excited about that.
You said we're educating them. Giving them a ticket? Said that's true education.
That is, that is true. That is, that is true.
Oh, it works, it works.
Yep.
They don't do it twice.
That's exactly right. So also, we have our newly, our new guides here, these guides go to events that we, we host or we're participating in, and then also, when we're delivering a new cart, or new carts to new residents, then we're gonna hand them this guide to help them, and all of our collection service, sorry, collection services, which contains recycling information, do's and don'ts. So, we're excited about that as well. Social posts that, that happen, that happen on a regular basis, so we're, we're educating the public through that. And coming online very soon is, through a grant, we were able to secure an opportunity to create some bags. This is an example bag right here, so this is a reusable bag that can have all of our recycling information on here, and then they can put it in their, residents can put it in their kitchen. Once they fill it loosely in here with all their recyclables, and it can be a mixture of all their recyclables, then they take it to their blue recycling cart, and they can dump it into their blue recycling cart, bring it back to their kitchen, and start over, so kind of a rinse and repeat. And it's good education right at their kitchen.
Mr. Dowell will appreciate that.
So.
It's never gonna get rinsed, but it'll get repeated.
Every household, or what, what's the plan?
Is not gonna be able to accommodate every household, I would love to do that, however, what we're going to do is focus on, focus on neighborhood association meetings, and so, you know, having them in those, those situations.
Lynn, is the thirty-one thirty-six included in Mildred's thirty thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so ten percent of what we collect every year of recyclables?
Yes, that's exactly right. And then the graphics that are on, you can barely see it on the container there, but this is a sample one, and I just stuck it on a board here, but this, the graphics are, are newly designed to be more clear and concise, they're repeated over and over again. We have a bookend signs at each recycling center that say this. It's on the containers as they're depositing their material in there, so it's reinforcement over and over again. So, we're hoping, and we, we found success, in fact, I've gotten many compliments as I'm at the recycling centers about these new signs, so that's exciting as well.
So let me just interject real quick, so the biggest problem we have with recycling, obviously, is contamination. It's the biggest problem by far. This is one of the reasons why you hear people say, why do you recycle, it's all gonna go into the landfill anyway, which is not a fact, but that does. So we're looking at modifying those containers, so you can't dump large pieces of construction debris in there, and only put recyclables in there. And the same thing you'll see later in the presentation is all the different recyclables that are not supposed to be in our blue carts, and that's where we get the contamination rate. And that's what does end up going back to the landfill. So, we need to get that down to the goal of ten percent, right now, we're at like twenty-five percent, twenty-six, based on our studies. So, if we can get that down through education and the widget, we'll be able to get down to ten percent and be more sustainable with our program.
What's the, the contracts we have with the recycling companies, what, there's a set contamination rate, correct?
Not really.
That we're supposed to attain?
Not really, I mean, there's a goal, but what we have at the MRF, or the Material Recycling Facility, is everything that goes through gets separated and bailed and sold, that's good recyclables. The others that goes through, but to the end, is put back into the landfill, and it hurts us that way.
And, and it costs us in that we haul, we paid to haul bad stuff.
Yes, and processed.
All the way, we've just taken in a loop of where if it had been in the green trash, it would've gone there directly, we've just paid for two trips.
Yep.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, and the process.
So, basically, using your blue recycling cart, you're gonna be sure to put these materials that are approved to go in there to recycle, like your pizza boxes, you wanna make sure that it's clean, free of food, it can have some small amount of grease, but not, you know, not very saturated. If you find that case, tear the lid off, recycle the lid, and trash the box, but.
Oh, is that one cool?
This one's good, yeah, so, little bit for the test later. Alright, so. And then you can read all the other do's and don'ts, that little sign that's not as visible right here, but that's all, that's located on your recycling carts as a reference as well, so it's repeated again. What you can put in the cart and you shouldn't put in the cart, so, alright, we can move to the next one.
I will share this experiential learning back, so the label isn't on the top of the cart. So if your cart is sitting under trees, which they may be in my household, over not long of a period of time, that label is completely unreadable. I don't know what the answer is, but if we get one of those nice bags.
Wash it, it's built in, it's not a label.
Okay.
It's a mold.
So you're suggesting I wash my garbage can, Dave?
Yes.
I'll put that on my to-do list. Definitely get to that.
There's actually a company that comes out and does it for you.
I'll, I'll put that on Mr. Dowell's to-do list, and I'm sure they're gonna get done.
Alright, and then the tips associated with this, obviously, you don't have to sort, you can put it all in. Lids and caps, labels can be kept on to the material. Food and liquid, you know, just make sure to rinse that out, don't recycle any material heavily soiled. And then, plastic bags that can be recycled at your local grocery store, so a lot of times, you will find residents do this. Now, not necessarily even in a clear bag, they might be in a black bag, and, and it's recyclables, it's all water bottles, or, you know, just the, the number two water bottles, perfect recycling, but they bag it, tie it up, put it in the recycling bin or at, at the recycling center, and then when it gets to the facility to sort, they're not allowed to open the bag, there's no telling what's gonna pop out, so they have to trash it.
Don't bag your recyclables.
Do not bag your recyclables. This is one of the biggest, and everywhere, contaminants. Alright, so go ahead, and keep your recycling lid closed for, you know, to keep weather out, to keep vectors out. And then, on the, on the supply and demand, the materials we place in the blue cart or the blue containers at the center go to the, the MRF, the Materials Recovery Facility, to be sorted and baled. I have a video of Pratt Recycling Processing Center, it's a three-minute video, I can share it with you all. I don't have it up here today, but that, you can, you can watch that, and it's so educational there, so you can see what happens to your stuff after it goes to that facility.
Where is that, did you mind said this, I'm sorry, where is it located, that facility?
It's in Duncan, however, the video is a Conyers, their Conyers location, they just did a professional video of what happens to your stuff, yeah.
And they are our only option for receiving recyclables.
Correct. Right now, that's it.
That's it in the state of South Carolina?
In the upstate. But it's very interesting, if you get to see how the whole operation works, and how they moved, they invested thirteen million, fourteen million in new equipment, so there's a lot of automation, and there's a lot of AI. So, these new machines can actually read those different types of plastics and be able to put them down separate lines. So the ones and twos, you know, the little recycling one through seven on the bottom of all the different plastics, they're on there, and it'll separate it, one through sevens. I mean, it can tell you that, the machines are amazing, and they even have machines now that'll actually do the handpicking, and some of them have air blowers, so it's impressive technology, and it's definitely worth a, a quick look or a visit to the, to Pratt's.
So.
Yeah, definitely.
So, your stuff is made into more usable stuff, extending the life of the material and saving the landfill space and preserving our natural resources, so it's important to, to continue to recycle. We can move to the next one. Top offenders, like I said, those bags, liquids, empty your containers, construction debris, and rigid plastics are also located in the, in there, and paint, paint's also a number one offender in the recycling area. So just educating people, because a lot of times, people see the paint cans and see a steel can and think, oh, that's recyclable, so they call that wish cycling, they just, I'm not sure, so I'll put it in there anyway. Go ahead and move on to the next one. So that leads us to Wanda. So in addition to Rocky, the recycler, we have Wanda the Waste Wizard, who is our mascot for our app that we have, and it's downloadable at Google Play or App, Apple App Store. Now you can, it's called GBL Trash Tracker, not only can you use it to find out where your material goes, you can also download it to get alerts and reminders of your services, so there's other options on there. We're still getting the word out to our community through social media, the graphics, you know, that we do at, at the centers, we're putting her on there to get people engaged. The guide, it's on the guide, and then we're continuing to place it on new collateral, so those bags, those reusable bags, we'll put it on there as well, so, yeah.
It is a great app, I mean, as, as, as a minimum, it reminds you to put your garbage out.
So put mattress in.
Did it say you noticed?
Yes, says put your garbage out, and, you know, these are the words, so I tell Steve.
I got an app that lives with me to tell me that.
Well, I get the alert, and I tell Steve to put the garbage out.
It's, it's on the garbage and on the homepage.
The good thing with the app is there's probably a thousand or more items, so if you have no idea what to do with something, like what do I do with this pen? Where's it go, is it recyclable, not recyclable, garbage, it'll tell you, so.
And then.
Everything, yeah, there's.
If you, if you type in a, a material that doesn't, it doesn't recognize, which they have thousands and thousands of things in there, you can suggest to put that in to your, and we check that to make sure that we need to update the, the system to reflect that item. So a lot of times, people look for mattresses, and it'll show you the top four items that people are searching for, and a lot of times, it's mattresses, furniture, paint cans, and TVs. Alright, so we can move on to the next one here. So I'm, I'm proud to be part of a city that cares, surrounding communities, suspended their curbside services for recycling, now that doesn't mean, like for Greenville County, Greenville County has convenience centers to, to recycle, but it puts the onus on those residents to drive that material to those convenience centers. But our city is demonstrating accessibility by keeping the service going, so I think that's very important, and.
I think there's a statewide, um, statewide situation too, a lot of cities around the state also discontinued.
That's true.
We were, we were the first city, first major city in South Carolina to offer curbside recycling. Now we're about the last city still standing to offer curbside recycling. Never, never would've seen that coming, but.
Other programs, innovative solutions that we have here, one is called the NICE program, the Neighborhood Infrastructure Cleanup Effort. Last year, we collected a hundred and seventy-five thousand pounds of material. That, you know, that's just, and that, that program started in twenty twenty, and I'll tell you about that in the next slide here. But before you move on to the next slide, the electronics and shredding, electronics, we collected twenty-seven thousand pounds last year, shredding, we collected forty-six thousand pounds, and there's five hundred cars per event, and it's a, it's a popular event that happens, you can go on the next slide.
So one very interesting tidbit about that, so shredded material cannot go in your blue cart. Shredded paper cannot go in the blue cart, however, all of the material shredded at those events is recycled. So the difference being, it's taken to a dedicated recycler that can handle small paper scraps, whereas them, again, Pratt can't handle that, it becomes pass-through.
It does, and it, it, it bogs down the machines and, and cases, so that's why shredded is not accepted for Pratt. So on this slide here, just highlighting some of the things that we do. Shredding and electronics is biannually, the one that's coming up is November the eleventh, from ten to one.
November eleventh?
Yes.
Ten to one?
Yep, put that on your calendars.
Electronics and shredding.
Correct, yep. We provide vendor recycling and receptacles for events, and the one coming up is Fall for Greenville this weekend, so we'll be doing that. Again, the NICE program started in twenty twenty. What that was doing was addressing the forty-five percent bulk curbside increase during COVID, and now we've kept the program as neighborhoods appreciate an outlet to keep their neighborhoods clean. And we're on Wednesday's route this week, so you'll see that in Wednesday's route, neighborhoods.
And how long is our NICE going for right now?
So Wednesday this week, Thursday route next week, and then we're complete, so we've already completed.
Monday, Tuesday. Monday, Tuesdays.
Yep, yes.
It normally takes a month to complete the entire cycle.
And we focus on brick, concrete blocks, pallets, things that we don't normally collect in, in, in our curbsides, but also you can still contribute your curbside collection bulk material into that.
And how much did we, did we collect last year, Lynn?
Last year, for NICE, a hundred and seventy-five thousand pounds. And so, on to the next one. So litter, we have a dedicated litter crew. As we know, litter is a major threat to the environment. You know, when people see a, a littered area, it gives the impression that somehow it's acceptable, and Greenville takes great pride in keeping our streets clean of litter. The average collected is sixty-eight thousand pounds handpicked each month. So that, so far, in twenty twenty-three, over five hundred thousand pounds.
This used to be an unsolvable problem, but Dave's group years ago divided the city into districts, and, and places that have litter tend to always have litter, it's, it's so identifiable, it's just crazy, certain corridors, and the regularity of the pickup now is so, is so incredibly, we hardly get any calls on it, it used to get them all the time. And just great job in systematizing, I guess, picking up the litter.
My district's my problem. It's the stuff near the, the line, the county line, that's where we have our biggest problem, is that people just automatically just make it a dumping ground. And I think Dave is, they've been policing it, and, and where we complain, and where I complain, I think, every day for, for, for weeks, etc., that area now looks great, because they cleaned it up, and sometimes they will not come by there. Also, our apartment complexes that have their own big cans, people from the county come to bring their stuff and just dump it in their cans, and so a lot of people are getting their own security thing, so they can catch them and keep them away from the yard, so it's just, yeah, they need to, to go away, but, but it's, it's a horrible thing, but they wanna bring their trash from the county to the city. I mean, and it's real obvious that, you know, when you see who the people are, and you know them, and you know they don't live in the city, and they dump their stuff in those little people's big cans. So we help provide their cleanup.
But litter is a lot like graffiti, right? Soon as you see a little graffiti, then you see more and more, and litter's the same way, it just multiplies. So the sooner we get it, the better off we are.
How are we able to, with the license plate recognition stuff, I mean, how we can't issue tickets based on that?
They're staked on, but.
How can we issue tickets?
We are.
But how?
So I, I have a, it's issued through a grant, right now, we're operating on a grant.
So it's legal to do that?
LPR cameras, and yes, so I'm working with the police department, and so anytime I have an identifiable.
Violator.
Violator, yes, thank you.
And I guess you can see them too, once they get out.
Yeah, well, the, the license plate, you see it on their vehicle, and then you see it in the, on the ground, or you see it in the container, so you match the two, same day, and there it is.
You gotta talk to your state.
Um, did y'all, so y'all have thirty-nine full-time employees?
That's amazing, that y'all do that.
Right, and you're fully staffed? Right? And you're fully staffed? So, and this might be a question for Dave and Mildred, well, all of y'all. Is it a fair statement that the new Public Works facility was instrumental or helpful in you recruiting people to work for Public Works and retaining them? And what I'm getting at is, is it is a world-class facility, well worth a tour for those who haven't toured. And just having that allows recruitment and retention of employees, just the place they go to work every day. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
I can say experience.
Which, which we know every time we're understaffed or lose employees, that's a huge expense for the city. And the reason I wanted to point that out is, is we are on the cusp of having that same transition for both GTA and their maintenance operations facility, as well as GPD and GFD for Halton Road opening. And it's not, you know, we're, we are in a workforce shortage, a workforce recruitment problem. And having a place you can be proud of to go to work is, is a huge part of that. And, and our responsibility to provide that to our employees. And City Hall, we're working, talking about it.
At City Hall.
And City Hall. We're just not as far along on that as we are on the F two. So with that said, you know, those two are gonna open up twenty twenty-four and, and I expect, you know, and not to mention municipal court moving over there too. The other thing I'm really proud of for this council is this is the council that supported changing the earliest pickup time for dumpsters to seven AM. Because we all realize it is not right to pick up a dumpster at three AM next to a neighborhood. That's just not protecting our neighborhoods. So between that and the facility and the private work, a month doesn't go by that I don't get a compliment about our public works staff. Be it fixing the sidewalk, working on breaking up trash, what, I mean, it's, it is consistent and it is heartfelt. And I think that comes from great leadership and, and as well as all the work y'all put in every day and finding the work. It's just remarkable.
We gotta say kudos for HR for helping us, you know, redo some of the job descriptions and OMB. Great job supporting us because the equipment is the other side of that coin. We have great equipment. And then, of course, we have the truck wash. Truck wash is probably one of the very few in South Carolina. But that truck wash means everything to the team to keeping their vehicles in excellent condition. You can't even tell if they're six years old. And you'll have it at the new.
We'll have it in the bus, so it'll be too.
Don't forget about toys.
Well, and also to that point though, Dave, and I'm glad you brought that up, we have in our budget, where's Patricia, our scheduled replacement of our fleet. It's a scheduled replacement of our fleet. We don't wait till that. We know the lifespan of our fleet. We are in scheduled fleet replacement. That's a huge part of our budget and same with GFD and GPD.
Every, every one of the vehicles in the city is in the fifteen-year.
Facilities do matter and it does help with morale and all. And the opposite is true too. The old Public Works facility, live that one.
Ask Mildred.
You'd be a special kind of person if you wanted to. Hard sell.
Well, we only have a couple of minutes. We only have a couple of minutes, so the quick dog and pony show.
Right, so quickly, I'm gonna test your recycling acuity. So can we recycle plastic bags? No, how about your bread bag? No, if it stretches, if it stretches, it's recyclable, but can it go in your blue can? No, but where can you take it? I have, I have a bunch of these that I can give to you today. So you can put these in your bags.
Hang them up.
Hang it up on your doorknob and then reuse them or take them and go to the grocery store. All right, so, yes.
The model's yes, the bag no.
Yes and no.
For the back end.
Yes, that's exactly it. Yes and no. So we're gonna go ahead and put it.
Look at Lynn go.
How about this?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Hardboard. Well, we didn't have a field test on.
No, 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 you're supposed to know that. You're supposed to be able to tell.
Where, it's not recyclable in your blue container, but where can you take it?
Grocery store.
Yes, all right.
Give it to me and I'll put it back in.
All right, but this, this is made, you know, this is recyclable. So you can go ahead and recycle this. This is called Chipboard. Is this recyclable?
Take the Cheerios out.
Take the Cheerios out, yes. And the plastic bag. But yes, you can. Okay. All right, we already talked about this.
Yes.
How about this?
No.
No, why?
Hard finish.
Yeah, reuse it, you know, reuse it. Yeah, but this is called rigid plastic. So no, all right.
Take it back to the dry cleaner.
Dry cleaner or take it to a little kids' store or something like that. So we're gonna trash it. Or trash it if it's broken, you know. How about, I'm trying to find, how about this right here?
No.
Nope, nope, you trash it.
Do the stuffing paper, no.
No styrofoam.
No, no styrofoam. Now, there are places that can, but here locally, we cannot. Okay. How about this?
What is it?
What is that?
It's a PVC pipe.
No.
Hard plastic. All right, how about this?
Okay, Steve Dowes throws those in the recycle bin every weekend and I take it out. I pull it out. Yay.
No, these are called tanglers, cords, hoses.
Well, I thought it was a hose.
Why does he have a garden hose?
He has everything.
Yeah. What did you want me to do?
The paper that comes in the packet, that. Yes.
Yes, how about your napkins?
No.
No.
Too dirty.
You can put it in your, well, if it's even not used, you know, you, you can put, yeah, too thin.
At some point, we have to make.
So you can put this in a compost, your home composting.
Where do I take the paint?
Take the paint. If it's usable paint, you can take it to Restore or you can take it to.
That dump on Blackberry Road.
Blackberry Valley Road County. There's other, there's other county drop-off centers that are staffed. They will take it. If it's not usable paint, kitty litter, dry it out. It does go into your trash. Okay, yes.
Definitely.
No.
Why not?
Because Steve keeps trying to put it in there and I keep fishing it out.
It can.
It can stay in there?
It can with the caps and it can.
Yeah, don't take the caps off.
It's a number two.
We never had the cap.
Number two.
Doesn't matter a cap or not. Number two's great plastic. Ones and twos are the most money.
There you are.
Make the most money.
One more minute. Yes.
Toys?
No.
No, hard plastic. All right.
La Croix can, yes.
Yeah, La Croix can, yes. Steel cans?
Yes.
Yes.
Rinced out.
This, yes, rinsed out, thank you.
No.
Yes.
All right.
I can't, there's a sticker on it, but number one. All right, mail.
No.
Yes.
Really? The recycle ton is just five thousand.
With the window? Yeah. Yep, paper, mailers, yep. Okay. No, it cannot be recycled. So if it's good usable and it doesn't have a lid, like you're like, man, I'm like, I can't use it.
Put it, put all your coat hangers.
You can, yeah, put all your coat hangers.
Donate it, donate it to someone.
All right.
No, what is that?
No. This was, this is, this probably came with a package. Yeah.
That's those hell of a fresh things.
If you're done, it has recycle name, your curbside recycling bin.
Yes.
So, no.
No.
You take the plastic off.
They're lying to us.
And no, they're going to make you too. So it's just not, it's not recyclable. A lot of types of chasing arrows represent materials made from recycling. So there's not a national standard. So, yeah, I think we're.
One question, Wes.
Yes.
Have we measured, have we looked at the impact of going to the large bins from the small ones?
What is tonnage?
I, I don't know, I don't know what the question is, but has there been an impact? What has been the impact of going to the big bins?
Participation is definitely up from the big ones.
Everybody's back injury has been solved.
You don't have to put it on. Some people put it on every other week.
Yeah.
So.
What's our first?
And our trash cans are shipped, right?
Oh, yeah, because everyone has our ID reader handle.
You're able to increase the volume prior to. Only eighteen gallons. Thing about recycling, the key to it is always convenient. The more can they get, the more people are happy to participate in. So by increasing the volume with that nine five.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you all. Thank you, Dave. Everybody recycle, recycle.
Those are great. My grandchildren love that.
I didn't give enough, Ken, then.
We need to get the mayor one of these.
Executive session.
All right. Let's get to executive session.
I saw moves that we go into executive session.
We have three items to discuss this afternoon, two are under section thirty dash four dash seven eight two.
Can we get in a bag?
Excuse me.
Incident. Potential public-private partnership agreement project at Ferris McAllister, also another PPP at West Washington Hudson. And then in fashion, a second A war.
Move to executive session.
I have a motion. Thank you.